We're trying to mean to order. We're tied them on agenda approval of minutes, approval of minutes considered will approve January 7th regular and closed session minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we hold off on the closed minutes. I do know that there are several folks who have not been able to access them as of yet because of issues with their email and may or may not have seen them at this point. And I do have an addition not necessarily-
Hold on, let's handle this and then I'll let you give the addition. Did anybody make a motion to move the, to approve the August 7th regular minute? Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion?
So I do have an edit there.
Okay.
And it is in the, and I can go look them up exactly, but it's in the information where Ms. Warwick was speaking outside page five, the top of page six, when she finishes her presentation and talks about the Carolina Thread Trail. I just like, would like for the minutes to include, I asked her a question at that point before we thanked her, if in fact, even though it was not dealing with this issue specifically, if at the time when we were talking about the stormwater public hearings months ago, if in fact she, because she brought a lot of stormwater information two weeks ago, back six months ago when we're having the stormwater public hearings, if she in fact spoke against us having to do a stormwater plan. And she, yes ma'am. Where is it? Because I couldn't find it.
If in the minutes, all but the part about her speaking against it, so we can add that part and I think that will clarify.
Because I just didn't see it, but Cindy, if you say it's there, then that is fine. Because I, for some reason, I didn't see it, but that is fine, if it is there. Thank you.
Have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We'll move on to the public hearings. The first one is 3A.
Your Honor-
Excuse me, you have-
I do have, I just have a, an agenda adjustment if the council would accept it. About two months ago, I asked that we have an introduction of Toby Neal, which on our agenda is 5A. So I'm going to ask the council if we can just have an agenda adjustment and put 5A before the public hearing so that he can go about his business.
Counsel, I entertain the motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Toby, would you come forward? Toby is the newly elected National President of the Future Business Leaders of America. And we want to give him a chance to make a few comments.
Thank you. And even though you're not a Stanley County resident, we appreciate you being here and representing the college, so the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, and thank you all for having me here today. I'll keep it brief because I know you have a lot of work ahead of you, but I'd just like to say that it is an extreme honor to not only be able to represent Stanley Community College, but North Carolina, as well as Albemarle in this role that I serve in. I am the first member of North Carolina Future Business Leaders of America collegiate to be elected as National President, but also in an extreme honor to be the first one to be serving as a community college student, which is really important because it just showcases the organization's just promotion of equality for all types of students, but also the commitment that Stanley Community College holds to its students in making sure that not only do we get a good academic education, but also that the training that we do to make sure that we are prepared to go into the workforce and be leaders in our community. So thank you, thank you again for this, and I just, it's an extreme honor to be able to serve in this, so thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And with him-
Mr. Mayor, before you leave there, I think we ought to recognize Dan Hazlitt.
That's about what I was-
Thank you. We were getting ready to do that.
That's exactly right. So Dan Hazlitt, Dan, will you just stand up, please? Dan Hazlitt is an icon at Stanley Community College and with the FBLA-PBL chapter across the state of North Carolina and the nation. He is one of a very few that serves as one of the national advisors for the National Association, so thank you, Mr. Hazlitt.
Now we'll move to 3A, public hearing ordinance 2324, consider annexation for petition for property on City Lake Drive. We will first hear from staff for an introduction, and then from the petitioner, and then from anyone else who cares to speak. We did have one person speak last week, and that person has already spoken, so we will move forward with other people tonight. Mr. Robinson, would you introduce?
Thank you, Mayor. As stated, this is annexation 23-02. It is 86 acres on City Lake Drive, tax parcel 13976. We do have the legal description included in your packet, including the meets and bounds, as well as the formal petition. And scroll through this. This is sideways, but this is the map of the property. I've got a better one that I will show in just a minute. The applicant is Southern Terra Incorporated. The owner is E.H. King Ayers LLC, courtesy of Liebert Management LLC, and we do right now, Mr. Michael Sandy is representing the applicant on this as well. The applicant's statement for the proposed addition is that they are offering additional housing to residents of Albemarle in a convenient location along City Lake Drive. That property right now is vacant. It's cleared land, has been for a while. The proposed use and what they've requested for rezoning to, if approved tonight, would be R10. The maximum number of units allowed on the property in R10 is 374 single-family detached units, or 498 duplex units, or a mix of the two. More practically, in a standard subdivision, we rarely ever see those numbers like that because you have streets and other things that come into place. Closer number would probably be 224 single-family detached, or 297 duplex units. That could yield a little bit more if they were to do a cluster development of up to 299 single-family detached, or 398 duplex units. However, given the development constraints on this site, a practical range to expect would be between 180 and 250 units max, although those numbers could be slightly, possibly be slightly higher. City water is available at Poplin's Grove Church Road, or within the neighboring Park West Development. Electrical is provided by the city of Albemarle. Sewer will be available at Poplin's Grove Church Road, also can be extended a line down City Lake Drive by easement to the, through the adjacent property to Poplin's Grove. Public utilities can provide more information on utilities at this location if necessary. Proposed street is, proposed development is located on City Lake Drive. Most major access points will be into, onto City Lake Drive with additional connections available into Park West neighborhood, and potentially to Bobcat Road. We do not have plans for those right now, so I cannot say exactly where all of those will be. Both City Lake and Bobcat Road are state-maintained. Internal streets in this development would be city-maintained. Property is located within the recommended fire service area at 1.1 to the closest point and 2.0 miles from the furthest point of the, of the property from Fire Station 2. Property is located immediately adjacent to city limits to the south and east, and with City Lake Park in close proximity to the north. Unfortunately, staff can't provide projected revenues at this time, however, it is assumed this development would add tax revenues similar to other single-family residential subdivisions in the city. City of Albemarle's future land use plan classifies this parcel's surrounding area as county primary and secondary growth area. County primary and secondary growth area is defined as areas within Stanley County Land Use Plan for each of the eight cities and towns located within Stanley County where growth and development has occurred over the next 10 years. Stanley County's new future land use plan, which came out this year, identifies this parcel as within a primary growth area bordering the city and designates it as multi-family neighborhood. That is not what is requested at this time with the rezoning of this to follow, that would be R10, which would be single-family and duplexes at the highest density. Property is not located in any regulated watershed area and does not contain floodplain. It does sit in close proximity to floodplain, along Long Lake and surrounding properties, and the area does experience flooding during significant weather events. If annexed, it would be recommended that any future development address stormwater capture on site. This is a map of the property. As you can see, it's relatively long. This is City Lake Drive to the north of the property. There's a couple locations where fronts immediately adjacent to the street. There is an undeveloped parcel, zoned LID in the city, to the east of it, along Poplin's Grove, and then to the south is Park West, which this section has Phase 2, has been built out, or is in the process of being built out, and then also Stanley Community College to the southwest of that. As you can see, this is the county RA zoning that is designated for this tract right now. Future land use map. As you can see, the approximate location where the star is, it's this entire section right here. Some additional photos for reference with the city limits in the blue and the yellow. And that is all staff has at this time. The applicant does have a presentation which we can pull up and they can provide to you as well.
At this time, all we're considering is annexation, is that correct?
Annexation and zoning, which is the typical process. There's no subdivision that's been submitted at this time, that would all have to come in later for approval.
Okay, there are two, there are two issues, I see. One's a hearing for annexation, and what's the second one then, if it's not?
Second one is for rezoning.
Okay, what would it come in as?
It's proposed-
If we approve number, proposal number one-
Right.
What do we have?
Right. If you approve proposal number one, it's not currently zoned. We need a zoning when we annex something in, so we have a land use associated with it. That's why the next, if it were approved to be annexed, the next case that you would hear would be the annexation, would be the rezoning for it, and that would be to R10.
Point of clarification. I appreciate the question, but the answer was it's currently not zoned. It's currently not zoned in the city.
In the city, I'm sorry, yeah.
So currently, it is a county zoning of RA.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
What is RA?
It's residential agriculture. It's larger, it's agriculture, and they just made some changes to the density there, but it's very sparsely developed. I think it's five acres, three to five acres per, per unit.
They're thinking about 10 acres.
But most of the county is zoned RA, most of the, kind of the rural areas of the county.
Further questions for staff? Okay, I will let the developer speak and tell us what they want to do.
I'll pull it up for you right here. Yeah, I'm just making sure I got the right one. This one. Make sure that's it. Is that it? All right.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, my name is Michael Sandy, I'm representing the, to the applicant on this item. As you can see, the, on the application, E.H. King Ayers, longtime family of Albemarle and Stanley County are wishing to have this property annexed into the city, and of course, with that initial zoning into the largest lot zoning that your ordinance allow, which is R10. Vicinity map, as you saw with staff report, you know where these locate, the property is located. We wanted to show this picture here. There's some issues back, I think Councilwoman Hall said something about the stormwater was brought up before. This is where the stormwater control devices would be located based on topography, but we're not into that stage yet, so we want to be sure that definitely any site improvements on this would cause for the, the, any issues in that area to be resolved as far as that. As I said, E.H. King Ayers property located near the corner of Poplin's Grove Road, we're asking for annexation and R10 zoning, a straight zoning. History on this property is that the family has owned the property, owned property in Albemarle for 125 years. Several properties have been and were conveyed near downtown has contributed to the recent revitalization of the city. The family members would like to continue their cooperation on this and other projects that are important to the city. Benefits of being in the city limits are that you get to control the growth, protect public safety and welfare, tax revenues, as staff mentioned, should exceed the cost of city services. The minimum density on zoning for residential is R10, protects property values, and fits into the city of Albemarle's comprehensive land use plan, that was also stated by staff. We're asking under petition under general statutes 168-31, that the government board of any municipality may annex by ordinance in the area contiguous to it boundaries upon the presentation of the government board a petition signed by the owners of all the real property located in such area. Just give you a zoning section, 160D 701, zoning regulations shall be made in accordance with a comprehensive plan, and shall be designed to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare, which we plan to do. We had a neighborhood meeting on August 10th at City Lake Park. We also had topics that were brought up and that we plan to address, that being a report that I will plan to give to the applicant. We talked about tree save areas, and how, where those were important, and where they were. Traffic was, was discussed. Talked about thread trail inclusion to this property, and we are most willing to do that. Neighborhood land uses, you know, neighbor, we have R10 to the south, we have, the Long Lake is already in the city. We want to be, we want to fit right in to the neighborhood as far as land use, be concurrent. Streamside management areas and stormwater mediation, all will be taken care of during the subdivision approval process. That would be in the, that would be in the next step. So we talked about the annexation, but city staff has received and reviewed the annexation, found it to be sufficient, and we also talked, 160A 58-2 talks about who can speak at a public, public hearing about annexation, and about, those would be anybody, any person residing in or owning property in the area for the proposed annexation, and any person in the city. Glad to answer any questions.
Counsel, having questions with the developer? Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a couple more gentlemen that are developers, I think, that have signed up. Thomas Lee Crosby?
Good to see you.
Okay, and for you and Darryl also?
That's correct.
Okay. Next then is Helen Simonson, is that correct?
I had a presentation that I submitted-
Ma'am, can you speak in that microphone, please? Thank you.
Sorry, I think I do this every time, I'm sorry.
Did you get that in last Friday? Because if it wasn't in last Friday, it's not going to be here for us to see unless you brought copies.
It was sent over the weekend, it was sent on Sunday, sorry.
Well, the council may have seen it in their email, but it will not be loaded, I don't think. Is that correct, Ms. Stone? Okay, so you can, we, I've seen your email, so you can talk about it.
Okay. Helen Simonson, 6701 Lake Side Drive in Charlotte.
Ma'am, I can't hear you. Pull that microphone up to your mouth-
There you go.
And speak up, please.
So Helen Simon, there we go. Helen Simonson, 6701 Lake Side Drive in Charlotte.
Charlotte?
In Charlotte, mhm.
So do you live in Charlotte?
I do live in Charlotte, but I'm a Stanley County native. My family lives in Oakboro.
Ms. Brits, Ms. Burks, would you come up and clarify, please?
So the statutes that Mr. Sandy shared said that the people that are allowed to speak during the public hearing may be residents or property owners, however, that statute isn't exclusive. It doesn't say only residents or property owners. I do believe the intent during legislative hearings is to allow for adequate civil, civic engagement for council during their deliberative processes, so I would err on the side of caution with allowing people to speak, as long as they're offering relevant information to the items on the agenda tonight.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Simonson?
Well, thank you. So my intent in speaking was to give you a brief update on some legislation that's been happening. I've had the opportunity to speak with you guys before, and you know that I'm a professional wetland scientist. So in 2006, the US Supreme Court issued guidance following a lawsuit, and it was called Rapanos.
Ma'am, I'm 84 years old, you're gonna have to speak into that thing.
So in 2006, the Supreme Court issued guidance, and it was from a lawsuit, and it was called, and it's called Rapanos, and it established a continuous surface nexus to welllands. And so you have to see a navigable water, and the navigable water is covered under the Clean Water Act, and then it follows all the way back visually to your intermittent or your perennial stream, and then this is what was covered by the Corps of Engineers under the Clean Water Act. So in North Carolina, we have 16 different types of welllands, and four of these primarily are groundwater-fed. We have mountain bogs in the mountains, we have picocins in the coast, and here in the Piedmont, we have vernal pools and Carolina bays. So all of these are primarily groundwater-fed, and so realizing the ecological importance of those welllands, the North Carolina DEQ put together guidance so that these welllands would still be regulated under North Carolina law. So May 25th of this year, the Supreme Court has had another ruling, and this was Sackett versus the EPA. And so the Army Corps of Engineers on September 1st is going to be issuing new guidance to go along with this new way to interpret the Clean Water Act. So simultaneously, what happened was that the legislature up in Raleigh with the Farm Bill 582 said to the Environmental Management Commission that they did not want, they, they said that they wanted a rule to not exceed federal definitions. So we're going to see what those new federal definitions are on September 1st, or at least the public beginning of that. But just wanted to let you guys know what was going on in the background. I know there's a lot going on everywhere, and just continuing to be a resource for this, for this city, and for this council, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can start it over there and then bring it around, yes ma'am?
So you all have heard me speak before in reference to the annexation. We've been looking at this for two years now, so I just decided to make it pretty simple and give a little background about myself. I live at 35796 City Lake Drive, and my property adjoins the 86 acres that are proposed for annexation. Background about myself is I grew up in Albemarle, off City Lake Drive, so I lived there at least 18, 20 years. Moved away for seven years and returned in 2004. In 2005, I purchased a beautiful home at 1004 PD Avenue, and I lived there for 11 years. I purchased that home from John and Nicole Williams and loved living in the city. Like I say, I resided there for 11 years inside of the city. In 2015, my mother had a stroke, and it left her disabled. She lives off of City Lake Drive, right around the corner from where I currently do. And in 2016, I was remarried and about to give birth to my second child, so we decided to sell our beloved home on PD Avenue and move to a seven-acre parcel of land that my parents owned off of City Lake Drive, and we decided to build our forever home there. This location enables me to assist my dad in the long-term care for my mother. I deliver meals to her four or five nights a week, and my three children, because we live so close, they have a great relationship with her. The location is, is essential to her care and being close. So in 2017, we were living with my parents, and we cut the driveway into our land and began to clear the lot for construction. In 2018, the King Ayers Trust began clearing the 86 acres of land that adjoins my property. This land has been vacant for over 100 years, which includes my lifetime, so I, you know, never expected this to be so soon, but you can imagine how heartbroken we were to have our home possibly surrounded by a development after we made such a personal investment of moving from the city to the, to the county. So whenever the King Ayers cleared the land, they have the right to, but they literally cleared right up to our property line. And the way that land perks, and the way we had to situate our home, it is a rolling, there are rolling hills, and there's a creek bed, and all the different things that came into play. Our home is right there on the property line. But in March 2020, they replanted, replanted the land with pines, because this has to be done in order to remain a part of the forestry exemption, and after that, the land was put on the market. Two years later, we're still here fighting the annexation of this parcel yet again. So I ask you, obviously, to vote against the development of the parcel in the adjoining land to City Lake Park Recreation Area, and my concerns are listed as, number one, the stormwater. Since moving back into this, onto City Lake Drive, I personally have incurred, or encountered the flooding that is shown on page two of the handout. The major flood in September 2018, the water overtops that road in three different areas currently. There was an, an incident, May 2020, just recently, City Lake Park was closed, and you'll see that third picture on the page two, that was the water coming over from City Lake Park over City Lake Drive. And I know you guys have seen before, possibly, the videos that we have of that same water. So the stormwater is definitely a huge concern as far as evacuation or life safety. Number two is road safety. The road will overtop with water in three distinct areas marked in red that I put down here on the third page in the, I marked in the photo. Development of the 86 acres will mean having multiple subdivision entrances and exits along the narrow street that is simply not made for heavy traffic. This road cannot be modified or enhanced for safety. An average of two cars per household, just to be, give you an idea, if subdivided, 150 homes times two cars, you've got 300 extra cars going and coming multiple times a day, and it only will add to the danger of the daily commutes and emergency evacuations. Page four is my third concern, the new construction runoff. The first photo is whenever we first moved there in 2018, those are my kids playing in the, in the creek. The second photo is the silt that is coming from the current construction at Park West. That is evidence that the silt fencing is not adequate in holding back the erosive waters that are coming down, and that's just on my property. And the page five there is the number four, my, my- that are coming down, and that's just on my property. And the page five there is the number four. My, my, number four issue is buffers. The top photo is my, that was when we first moved there, so our yard is not established. But those are workers replanting the pines, and that's how close they cut. And so a two-story home in that area will overtower my home. And if there aren't any buffers, and the city currently does not have any buffers in place for development or any kind of guidelines or rules for these guys that want to develop, they literally can cut right up to our property line, and then it's, it invades the privacy, and it doesn't protect the equity that I've built there. And so that last picture is one year's growth from when they planted, was April 2021. Those are just some examples of why I don't think that we are ready to develop this parcel. There's a lot of ideas and opportunities, you know, for a different type of use, but right now, we're just talking about the annexation. And I, I would ask that you please vote against the city annexing it into, into your care. And so we are also in the sewer business. And I know there's a lot of sewer upgrades going on, but your current wastewater treatment plant can handle about four million, four million gallons a day. And if it rains one-half inch, it flows over into the lake or the creek behind it. So you're gonna be adding sewer capacity. It's not gonna be a gravity-fed system. There's a lot of rolling hills. You're gonna have some, some challenges whenever it comes to water and sewer there, because the ground is not conducive to a lot of, I mean, it's been forestry land for over a hundred years. So it's gonna be quite a challenge. And so those are just my points, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Kevin Farmer.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. My name is Kevin Farmer. I just recently moved into a property, 31986 Blakely Drive, and I think you might have already got my, not necessarily from me, but Carl, I think, sent a little presentation with my stuff in there as well. But a lot of the stuff that Paige was talking about, how the flooding happens right at the end of my property. So where you see all the water coming over, City Lake, that's my property, where it's all flooding from, because there is a stream that I found through the USGS that runs from the King Airs property all the way down through my property. And if you look at the aerial shots of that property, you can see that there is a huge buffer zone in that. And the green that you see from that buffer zone is that stream that runs directly through my property. And the, the topographic change that happens, it's like six hundred to six hundred and fifty feet above sea level from the King Airs, and it drops drastically as it travels down towards City Lake Park. Also, that stream that runs from that property through my property goes directly into the City Lake Park. So, and it's only gonna get worse the more blacktops that are, and, that are put up there and not having proper stormwater mitigation things and stuff like that through. You just gotta excuse me, I'm very nervous right now. Very passionate about, I just, I just bought this property. I spent almost just under twelve years in the Marine Corps. I got out, and my passion has always been to have my own homestead. And I just spent a ridiculous amount of money on this property, and I'm beginning to tune it into my own, to have my family. I have seven kids, and we do a lot on ours from livestock, chickens, pigs, and we're working on building up for cattle and everything like that. I know it's zoned RA, and it's one hundred percent within my right, because I've checked with the county, and I'm able to have all of this. And to change it to R10, which, I just want to clarify that this is not going to change my lot, is that correct? It's only this particular property to...
The request is not to change your lot.
Correct, okay. So that, that, that looks even better. But then you also gotta think that my property, what I have proposed that I'm going to do on my property is going to have my pigs and chickens and stuff like that, and I do slaughter on my property to feed my family. So increasing the buffer zones, and I didn't see anything inside the ordinances that states the buffer from R10 to RA. Any type of county to city, I didn't find anything. So does that mean that there is no buffer zone between it, excuse me, no vegetation or anything like that in between the two? Because single-family to single-family, according to the chart, doesn't say that it requires any type of buffer zone. Also with that, they said R10 is the highest, is that the way it goes, R10? But I've seen that you guys just, let's say, adjudicated a property of PD land to R15, which is probably only four miles from here. So why couldn't this property be designated as R15 instead of R10? And my reasoning, if it had to get annexed, which I don't want it to, I'd rather it be a low density, an even more low density, that would not allow duplexes or anything like that, because that obviously creates a bigger footprint and could potentially flood out my property even more, which causing, you know, potential loss of equity into my, my property as well. I have 6.6 acres, and I'm trying to use every bit of it for, and it not be flooded out. But from November, when I moved in, it was flooded at the end of the road pretty much all year round, and it's still damp, you know, to this day. I don't think that the BNP's that they have to want to put in place will properly contain this, the watershed. They say that it doesn't fall into a watershed. I don't believe it because of the drastic topographic change that it has, and it's all coming towards my property. So the safety and welfare of me and mine is first and foremost. Let's see what else. I think, I'm just, I can't think of everything right now, but like I said, I'm, I'm one hundred percent against it, and I hope that you're able to, to vote with me on that. It's already been a couple of times that this plot has come up, and you guys have rejected it at that point in time, so why change anything from there? Also, like I said, back, what, last, last year, you guys adjudicated the PD land development? I don't think anything's been built on that yet, so why are we rushing to annex this? Why can't we just see what happens with that and ensure that the proper mitigations and everything can continue to go? I just think that a due process should be in place before with appropriate watershed and, and environmental impacts before an annexation thing happens, because it, once you annex it, you're gonna have to go through this whole process again if it were to try and get changed back into anything else. So I think we should do our due diligence and think about the future, because I am the future of, of, of this, and I, I thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Laura, is it Craig?
I live on Valley Drive in Albemarle. I am a resident of Stanley County for twenty years now. My background is that I am retired and busy with volunteer activities, including being an extension master gardener and a beekeeper, among many other things. And it is my wish to, thank you, it is my wish to share some information with you from a book by a famous naturalist and conservative called Doug Talame, and this book is called Nature's Best Hope. There are two copies of it available at the Stanley County Library if I perk your attention. I'm going to be talking about my concerns regarding the environmental impact that will result if you do decide to annex the property at the City Lake for housing developments. As representatives concerned with the well-being of Stanley County, I hope that you also consider yourselves as stewards of the environment. I'm going to share the doom and gloom part of the book that motivated the author to write it. The rest of the book discusses how to make positive changes regarding the health of our biosphere. I'm asking you to preserve the jewel we have known as City Lake Park in Stanley County. Dr. Talame tells us that only five percent of our land in the lower forty-eight states is now anything close to its pristine, self-sustaining ecological condition, and that we've lost our opportunity to save our country from such development. Ninety-five percent of our country has been logged, tilled, drained, paved, or otherwise developed. Our rivers have been straightened and drained, and several no longer reach the sea. Our air is polluted, our aquifers pumped dry, and our climate has changed for centuries to come. We have purposely imported thousands of species of plants, insects, and diseases from other lands, which may have decimated many native plant communities on which local food webs depend. And we have carved the natural world into tiny remnants, each too small to support the variety of species required to sustain the ecosystems that support us. If we will lose our ability to live in the world without nature if we don't keep our ecosystems healthy, our world can no longer tolerate actions that degrade our local environment, such as the clearing of a site of great significance to the environment as the area at City Lake Park. Plants produce our oxygen, clean our water, and delay its journey to the salty sea. Store atmospheric carbon that would otherwise wreak more havoc with our climate. Build topsoil and hold it in place and prevent floods. Animals provide pest control services and pollinate our crops and nearly ninety percent of all plant species. Ignorance of nature has led to indifference of its fate. We are now living off the ecological interest that was generated by a healthy environment long ago, but we are eating up the principal at an alarming rate. Agricultural lands, cities, and vast suburban tracts that surround them have replaced natural areas in so many places that not enough nature remains to generate the natural capital on which our lives depend. Whether we like nature or not, none of us will be able to live for long in a world without it. We must develop a new mindfulness about how our actions affect the physical and living world around us. Dr. Talame suggests that we develop a new mindfulness about impacts on the local environment. Luckily for us, the ecological Armageddon of which I speak has, has been blindly encouraged and is largely reversible if we adopt a new relationship with nature. All places have ecological significance, not the few places we have not yet destroyed. All land and ecosystems on it are essential to everyone's well-being. The acreage at City Lake Park is part of an important ecosystem with clean water, plants and trees that support many species of fish and birds, including eagles. Construction of the housing development on this site would quite possibly follow the water and fail to provide a safe environment to the native plants and animals currently in residence. I understand and appreciate your wish to expand Stanley County, and there are other areas available that can be developed that are not on the site of such an important ecological site. I urge you to consider the fact that putting the development there will have a negative impact on the environment. I ask you to act reverently toward this area in question. Preserving it is not the only work that needs to be done, but don't hesitate to preserve its benefits to us. It's time to take action to support nature and not destroy it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, you have a packet that was given to you tonight of several, of most of the information that Ms. Wirick has given us on last week, and some smart growth, and additional pictures, and some information on the letter that I received in the mail from Raymond and Dee Dee Pack. So is there any questions you have of Ms. Wirick that doesn't pertain to what she presented us last week? Is there anyone else who cares to speak for or against?
That information, this is what I have for you, is testimony specific to the A.D.'s favor. When I was here before you two weeks ago, that was specific to my concerns with zoning and buffers and what we need to be mindful of, communities that attend to keep the other community. But what's before you tonight, I did not speak on specifically because I couldn't, because it wasn't part of that hearing. And I asked that I could be heard, but it's part of the information that I presented.
Okay, come on forward.
And I apologize. I thank you guys for allowing me to share and speak with you. And I apologize I didn't get this to you on Friday, because I've spent sixteen hours working on this from Thursday, Friday, and throughout the weekend. So my parents, Jim and Marilyn Lauter, have lived at 35737 City Lake Drive for over fifty years. We have concerns about the petitioner's request to annex eighty-six acres into the city of Albemarle for residential development. The black star marks my home. If you look at slide number two, the black star marks our home and the red arrow, the eighty-six acres. Now please slip to slide number three. There are over seventeen miles of water that flow from the northern end of Stanley County into Long Lake. For twenty years or more, Long Lake was a dry lake due to the concern about safety of the dam possibly failing and flooding the town of Albemarle. Approximately twenty years ago, the lake was filled with water, and the City Lake Park was opened. Slide number four. On August 4th, I shared with you the North Carolina Department of Transportation's hydraulic study dated November 2022. This report noted seven locations on City Lake Drive that needed stormwater pipes replaced with larger pipes. There are three sites at the property owners of Kevin Farmer, Jim Lauter, and the Shrine Club, where the rain barrel is also needed, needing to be installed. The purpose of the rain barrel is to capture the floodwater and to use it at a later time. Slide number five. Historic data reports that fifty percent of the flooding that has taken place over the last fifty years, you'll see that fifty percent of it has taken place in the last ten years here in Albemarle, the city of Albemarle. Out of that, twenty-one homes were impacted and thirty-four businesses. Currently, there's five hundred and forty properties that are in the one-hundred-year floodplain in the city of Albemarle. Two hundred and twelve of these are homes. Three hundred and twenty-eight of them are businesses. Slide number six, at risk, let me look at that slide, Risk Report, let me see, no, RiskFactor.com. It reports that nine, one hundred and nineteen properties were impacted here in the city of Albemarle in September 2018 by Hurricane Florence. here in the city of Albemarle in September 2018 by Hurricane Florence. Then we go to slide number seven, which Kevin shared earlier. It talks about the area, the area land map. That map, you see that you've got two areas of conservation. You've got Rock Creek Park, and you've got City Lake Drive, or City Lake Park. And so I bring that reference, the map up, and I also want to reference Albemarle's 2022 Land Use Plan notes that I have reviewed. And they read, and we can look through, you can look through slides eight through slides 13, and you've seen these pictures multiple times, and you've seen videos. And in that packet are recent photos of flooding that has occurred even this summer. But the Albemarle Land Use Plan, when it talks about floodplains, it says the city of Albemarle has a significant portion of the center of the city that is within a 100-year floodplain, which currently contains several industrial uses and a railroad corridor. This 100-year floodplain also extends to the northeast and southwest parts of the city. The 100-year floodplain at the western edge of the city has recreational use. City Lake Park is located on this site. Then it talks about the wetlands. There are small areas of wetlands in Albemarle, all of which are located along the creek beds of major creeks and streams. Look at our three streams, Town Creek, Little Long Creek, Long Creek. These areas are classified as freshwatered forested shrub wetlands by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Wetlands are lands in which the soil and substrate is periodically saturated with or covered by water. Many of the city's wetland areas are being preserved and utilized in the city's greenway system. So on August 7th, again, I shared with you about my hope and desire for our city to work with Carolina Thread Trail and educate our future developers on the importance of using thread trails and greenway space in our neighborhoods. So if we go, let's see, and then we have Albemarle Public Water Supply watershed. A small portion of Albemarle city limits lies within the Lake Tillery watershed. This portion is in the southeastern tip of Albemarle, is classified as protected area, which requires minimum lot sizes of two dwelling units per acre or a maximum of 24% built-on area for low-density development. In addition, stream buffers are required. A century ago, Long Lake, City Lake Park, that area was a protected watershed because it was the city of Albemarle's main primary drinking source of water. Today, that's the primary drinking source of the residents that live in the county of City Lake Drive. That is a watershed. So if we look at map number 14, the slide number 14, here you have the USGA map. It defines six streams of wetlands that are immediately adjacent to Long Lake. Like, these are the six streams that are right there at the mouth of Long Lake. The wetlands total 10.37 acres. 10 acres of water that shed into 71 acres of lake. And the wetland on page 14, that Kevin spoke to you about, Mr. Farmer, the 1.49 acre where it goes from the King property to Kevin's property, through his property, across the City Lake Drive, and then it feeds into City Lake. Right where it feeds into City Lake, that's the property line where Jim and Marilyn Louder's property sits. And I've shown you evidence in the photos where that lake is flooding our front yard excessively. Slide number 15. Here you've got USGA map that defines all the wetlands that flow into the creeks and streams around the city of Albemarle. There are six large red arrows that mark repeated flood areas in the city. And these areas are those that have made the news. And there's more areas. The small red arrows mark where the City Lake Drive has been overtopped with water since 2018 and 2020. And recently, blakely overtopped, here recently in July. Slide number 16. And what you have is you have a map of City Lake Drive, and you've got, this comes from FEMA. And you can see that the orange area states that it's out of a special flood zone area. And the dark purple is the 2008 floodplain. And then the light purple is where they extend the floodplain lines, or the water lines. But as you can tell already, that the water is overtopping the road into the orange area, which is out of the special flood hazard area. So the FEMA maps were last updated in 2008, with the high-water marks being updated in 2012. This slide clearly shows that the 100-year watermark has expanded and that the FEMA flood maps are completely out of date. The North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality recommends on their website, to prevent and minimize flooding, their top recommendation, they have a whole list of them, is to avoid building along water bodies and in floodplains and in other flood-prone areas where structural damage is likely to occur. So I don't know if you plan, if this will pass or not pass, but I do want to reemphasize that in the watershed going towards Lake Tillery, that's now your main water source that serves the citizens that are on City Water City Sewer. But City Lake Drive is in a watershed, and that's our main water source in the county where we live. But you will only allow two houses per acre to be built in that watershed. But here, the petitioner's coming to us, coming to you, asking for R10, which is four houses per acre. And then when I looked at the city's 2028 plan as well, land use plan, where there is conservation, they use R15. So I really, again, I want to emphasize that we really, I want us to slow down and think through our ordinances in the planning that goes on. This is all residential agricultural land, and the city has every right to annex it into the county, from county land into the city. But as we do that, I think we need to give great consideration to the residents who have been living there and put in subdivision setbacks or subdivision buffers. Albemarle has no subdivision buffers at all. I have studied extensively the town of Cary, and I will, I want to email you guys more information that I've found from the town of Cary. But where you have RA residential, I mean rural agricultural zoning, they are not going in there allowing residential communities being built that don't have a 40-foot buffer or more between the property lines. And so I really tried to keep my presentation small because there were other things, there were other pictures that I wanted to show you, even over in Morgan Hills, where the road, the developer clear-cut all the trees right up to the person's property line, and now they're going to have five neighbors. And I'm asking that we be very mindful of what we do when we develop the city of Albemarle in Stanley County.
Clarify what you said about Lake Tillery again, please.
Lake Tillery?
Yeah.
So Lake Tillery is the main water source that feeds a lot of the water. The reason this is not considered a watershed is because it doesn't, it's not considered good water. And Helen can speak with regards to that. But it's also an area that's had dry land for 20 years, and now we have water in it, and it hasn't had an opportunity to be tested for clean water or good water. And so I'd ask that we go through those steps to determine what kind of water source we have there. Because my neighbors on City Lake Drive, whenever it was a dry parcel where the Pakmans live, the gentleman who lived there, he cleaned out massive amounts of debris to clean that lake up before the city ever filled it up. So we haven't even given it a chance to find out, do we have clean water here? Do we have good water here? Because we could.
Thank you. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I know you've heard a lot of information, and I can guarantee you the 86 acres, it's not going to melt the ice caps in the world. But we are going to do everything that's required by law, state, federal, and local, including the city of Albemarle, as far as dealing with any stream buffers, erosion control, stormwater. Those things will be exceeded the minimum requirements. I can guarantee you that. In the years I've been working in this business and planning zoning and development, those things will be addressed. The developer, whoever that may be, in the future, will have to address those. They're not wanting to spend the $100, $150,000 to come up with exact site plans, layouts, to address every issue that was brought up for you tonight because there's no guarantee that you would even pull the trigger to go get through the annexation part. We're not asking for special zoning. We're not asking for R8, or R6, or Cluster, or anything tonight. We're asking just to be annexed to the town. We can't address all these issues until you get to the subdivision part. And there's rules and regulations that the city has that far exceed what the county has, far exceed the minimums from the state requirements, from DNR. We want to go through your process and let you regulate these things, let you approve them, and do over and above what is required. You know, the property was timbered under the timbering program several years ago. On their, on the King family heirs' property, they have the right to do that. It has nothing to do with it being asked for annexation. Erosion control measures on another project that flows through ours, we can't be held responsible for that. But the infrastructure that we're required to put in, we'll address it. Those stormwater retention ponds, you know, any earth-moving requirements, we will have to put in silt fencing, we'll have to address those issues, and we will be held, the developer will be held responsible for those problems if they arise. City Lake Drive, I can give you the history of that. You know, a lot of y'all grew up here, you knew that used to be a gravel road. There was a lot of, it was a cut-through for that part of the town, so you had to come into town. There was a lot of other things going on. The road was old country, as I call it, a farm-to-market road. And it wasn't built like the roads are today. Okay? It is paved, it's curvy, it's got some low points where it does need to be addressed currently without anything to do with this 86 acres. We are wanting a chance to come into the city in order to say, hey, we want to follow your rules and regulations. We will address all the impacts that our property imposed. During the community meeting, we had several property owners who wanted to buy a portion of this property. That is a consideration that may happen if we can get it annexed in the city and get title to the property. They will consider, and I was told by the Southern Terror Group, that they would consider selling adjacent property, some adjacent property to the ones who are interested for market price. So that will alleviate their buffer requirements. We can't be held liable that they built 30, 40, 50 feet from the property line to their, they knew where the property line was at. They knew the impacts, you know, that they caused on the other properties just like they would in reverse. We're going to be in the city under harsher, strict, more regulated standards than you are in the county. Right now, as it was stated by staff and others, it's on residential agriculture. You know, the King family heirs have said multiple times they have been approached by people who want to put agriculture uses on property, horses, cows, chicken houses, any kind of other housing options in there or maybe on larger tracts. But those impacts are still there from agriculture-related. And the King family does not want that. They have consistently worked with the city over the last 100 years as property owners, investment in the city, and they want to continue that relationship with you. So I'm, I ask that you join with them to do this project, to get us in the city, give us a basic R10 zoning. Now, many of you know me, I'm a certified floodplain manager. So I understand all the flooding issues. There's a difference between regulation of a flood zone and, Kevin Robinson can ascertain to this also, there's regulated flood zone, and then there's areas that flood anyway. You all know that. I've sat here in your meeting last year when you talked about stormwater issues. It's not a flood zone that's going to have, that can always only have stormwater issues. It's the volume of water that comes across impervious coverages onto other property. It goes down low areas of creeks and causes what we call localized flooding, but it is not in a flood zone. So I understand that. Watershed, yes, there are actually five classifications of watershed as far as regulating water quality. Every property that's not, that isn't flowing to Lake Tillery, for example, is classified as watershed five, which is unregulated for water quality. Four is what Lake Tillery and Baden Lake are, which your water plants draw out of. There's other places such as Mooresville has a watershed limit of two, and is very, very restrictive. And there's also the watershed level restriction of number one, which is on federal state lands that no development can happen. Our property's not even in a watershed that has any regulations that deal with, deal with water quality. But I can assure you, the water quality is going to be a whole lot better once you have stormwater controls into the, on the property and in place when the development gets approved and occurs. It's not going to happen overnight. Also, staff had also mentioned about the number of units could be put on the property. Yes, you can do basic math, you can take R10 size based on the acreage, do a quick number. This property is not flat, it's not a square, it's not perfect in order to be developed. It has to, you have to go with the flow of the topography. You've got odd shapes and angles. Every lot's going to be more than 10,000 square feet. Nobody can have a perfect utopia when it comes to lot layout. I have, I have looked and approved many, many subdivisions. It's impossible. So the density on this thing, I looked at it, I walked the property. The topography's a challenge, the layout's a challenge. You know, we're looking at probably two, two-and-a-half units an acre if we're lucky. The other thing about traffic. I have talked to Dr. Anamite at Community College, and he says, and he has told me, in his words, and it's not the reflection of the college, but he said that they would love to have a second entrance out of the backside of that college. And that's always been an issue. The college is in the city. We have an opportunity to connect to the city on the backside, to the, excuse me, to the college on the backside and come out, either through our network, they can come out to City Lake, but preferably out Popcat Road. You know, we've had plenty of issues at Community College where there's been wrecks on the one road that comes in and out, fire issues, accidents, ICE, everything that you can think of, the safety of the neighborhood, and interconnectivity is part of that. We want to be a team player, and when the development occurs, that will happen, interconnectivity. I can assure you that when we approach planning staff, they are going to require us to have some connectivity in the Park West also, which they already have stubs and y'all have approved those. So we want to be good neighbors. You know, we want to lessen the impacts of the adjacent property owners. But we can't do that unless we can get through the annexation process. So I'd be planning to try to answer any questions, but I can't save the polar ice cap, you know, by letting this 86 acre sit for eternity.
Anyone have a question?
Michael, I'm confused here. You said that all you're asking is annexation. You're not asking for development or anything like that.
That's correct.
Can we, how can we do that without committing 400 houses per acre?
Well, like I said, the process, and it's all based on state law. The process is, once you annex it, it leaves county zoning, and you have to apply your zoning on top of it. Mr. Robinson talked about earlier, you have to apply a zoning district. And so your largest lot zoning district is R10, and that's all we're asking for. It's just-
But R10 allows for how many hundred houses on that property?
It allows, each house has to have a minimum of 10,000 square feet.
So that's four houses per acre?
It could be, yes. That's the maximum.
That's 44,000 feet in an acre. So if it's 10,000, that's four houses per acre, right?
You have to back out, once you back out the streets, which would require 50 foot, 60 foot right away. And then each lot's going to be more than 10,000 feet. So like I told you, my planning background and looking- So like I told you, my planning background and looking at this property, you're only looking at two and a half, maybe 2.8 units per acre, unlike the four units an acre that your zoning would allow, because the property is not perfect.
Is there, is there a zoning R something that would allow two houses per acre?
We do have an R15 zoning, and one that was created that was primarily for properties that were within the watershed, the protected watershed to the east of the city. It's not to say that it couldn't be used elsewhere. In fact, I think it states that, you know, estate-sized lots, other critical areas that it could be, it could be utilized there. That allows for 15,000 square foot lots, breaks down to about 2.9 units per acre. That is the lowest density we have. We only have, I think, two or three properties right now that have that zoning.
What council needs to make a decision tonight is on the annexation.
That's true.
And then we'll move to the zoning if council approves the annexation. Kevin, I do have a quest, one quick question. They were talking about buffers. We've had some units come in with buffers, but they're all voluntary. Is that correct?
The vast majority of the subdivisions we get in do have a buffer associated. It's anywhere between 20 and 50 feet. They are correct. Right now, we, we do have buffers in the city. They are not required for similar uses against similar uses. So if somebody were to put, not zone for that, but if this were to be zone commercial and somebody put commercial in there, there would be buffer of varying sizes that would be required there for that. Planning, we're just looking into buffers right now. It's not something we have in place, so I can't say what exactly that would consist of. But I do imagine probably within the next six months to a year, we'll have something in place for that.
Thank you. Stay right there. I'm just looking at the cover sheet that was before us. And it basically says that it's currently zoned county RA. And during this time, right now, that the, that the expressed interest, I think you may have, I don't know if you've got it in there or not, but there's not been any changes from, you have it in there?
Yeah, it's up there somewhere.
As you're bringing that up, what I'm getting to, show me the current map. Bring up the current map so that, I mean, I know we've got it and I can look at it, but bring it up so that I can ask the question, so folks can understand while I'm asking.
About that.
That may answer it. So, and you can't, do you have a pointer on that? Do you have a mouse? There you go.
I can see it.
There you go. And here's what I want you to show me, so that we're all talking the same language. Currently, that property which is in the city limits is in that gray color. Is that correct?
You got this little section right here, which is LID, yes. Yeah, that's, hang on. Yeah, right here.
And the property in question, the 86 acres, show me with the mouse.
Right here, in the blue.
Stop. Okay, go to the, go to the far left. We're, go to Blakely. Blakely is currently in the county.
That's correct. Can't see it real well. Let me zoom, let me zoom down here for you.
What I'm trying to get to is that this piece of property, unlike others, is adjacent to the, to current city. That's, I, I just, I needed to see that, and maybe for, it's not like we're spot, it's not spot.
No, not at all.
This is adjacent.
I mean, in, in a lot of cases, I mean, this is, and this is what, I don't want to necessarily say anything about this specific property, but I mean, this is the type of natural growth that should, the city should be going through, should annex areas that are adjacent to it. You're not going out and grabbing islands of properties that are way far out. So in that aspect, it does make sense. There is development, again, specifically from a growth and development standpoint, not from addressing all the other items that have been brought up tonight. But it is adjacent to the community college. It is adjacent to Park West, which is building out.
If you will. Sorry to interrupt you. Show me where the community college is on there.
It's this parcel and then all of these down here.
And I could see that. Again, I want everybody to be able to see what we're talking about. Okay? I mean, I think we've all got to look at the same thing. Can't make any, you know, we've got to see it. And the last question that I'll ask is, I saw in the cover sheet that this property is located within a future growth area in the current land use plan. And is that the current land use plan of 2028?
This right here is the city's future land use plan of 2028. County and city did their plans at the same time when this was done. So the growth areas that you'll see there are reflected in counties as well. County does have an updated future land use map, 2040, and they drill down in a little bit more detail as to what those growth areas consist of.
And within, within the current county's, county land use plan is, and this may not be a fair question, but within the current county land use plan, is it my, it's my understanding that this is a piece of property that has been, that would be a natural for growth?
Yes, yes, they have it. This is a primary growth area, high density. Most everything in this, this area between Concord Road and down towards the community college, down towards.
Can you use your mouse there?
Yeah. This, this wedge right here, most of this, and I'm sorry, I don't have the map to show you, but most of this is showing up as that higher density, primary growth area, some lower density growth areas out past there.
Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions of staff?
While we're in, while we're still, just, I need to make a comment for complete transparency of a petitioner trying to contact me. I return phone calls sometimes and not know who I am calling. I returned a phone call of a person representing the King family. And when I realized that that was what it was about, I said to you directly and very specifically that I would not talk with you ahead of time. For complete transparency, as soon as that occurred, I let Ms. Britt know it, just because that's not a practice that I have ever done, nor will I ever do. So I just wanted folks to know that there was that communication, but only that when I found out he was with the King heirs, I said I will not talk with you. So thank you very much. And that was just for complete transparency.
I have been contacted on both sides.
There is, this is not a quasi judicial, so you're just making it transparent, is what you're doing.
So I would not need to, even though I have family that has spoken tonight in regards to.
You have no financial interest in it, do you?
No, I do not.
Then, Ms. Britt, I'm correct in saying that he is fine? All right. Anyone else care to speak for or against? Yes, sir.
I am Tommy Crosby, and I am the gentleman that contacted the lady, and she is correct in everything she spoke about. I would like to say that I am aware of every concern that's been, you know, put forth here tonight. I'd also like to say that until city council or somebody puts this whole thing together for us and gives us some direction, we have no direction. And this thing will just keep going on and on and on. So we're here tonight to ask city council to accept the responsibility of guiding this project to the next step. That would be subdivision. That would be a subdivision hearing and, you know, all the things that go with subdivision. We'd just like to make sure that everybody understands this is an annexation rezoning hearing and not a subdivision hearing. And again, I empathize with all, everything to say here tonight. But again, those are sub, issues for subdivisions. And council holds the key to getting to that next step. So we would ask council to accept our responsibility if, if it wishes to. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counsel, I entertain a motion that we close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge. Counsel, that is totally up to you. You have heard that, a request to continue the public hearing. That is totally up to you whether you want to continue it or move forward.
I, I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing.
And I have a motion by Councilmember Bramble to continue the public hearing.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Hall. Further discussion?
My, and my reasoning for it is that we have two members of council who are not here. And this is, in my opinion, an issue that is large enough that needs to have everyone's input.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Since we have continued 3A, we will also need to continue 3B, because we cannot hear that tonight either. Let's move on to 3C. Yes, it would.
September 4th, it's the first Tuesday.
Tuesday after Labor Day.
Tuesday after Labor Day.
All right. Ms. Britt, Ms. Britt just said we need to open the public hearing on the rezoning and then continue it. I'll open the public hearing on the rezoning. Now entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for the rezoning.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on now to 3C, ordinance 2326, rezone tax record 2638 from R8 to R6. Staff, if you will introduce.
Just apologize about that there. Scroll down for you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, council. So we're here at zoning map amendment 23-06, or excuse me, again, 07, I apologize. Here we go, ZMA 23-07. The applicant is Darway Delmede. And this is out off Henry J Street. It is tax record 2638. The request will be the petition lies from R8 to R6. There are single-family homes on this track, and I will explain further. So we're at staff analysis, Henry J Street, near Ari Avenue. Applicant owner is Darway Delmede. We just talked about the requested zoning change. She is wishing to create two single-family lots for 1004 and 1006 Henry J Street. Like I said, two, two single-family homes already own this lot. He just wants to create a zoning where they can be subdivided. To the north, we have R8. To the south, we have R8. To the east, we have R8. West, R8. And still to the south, GHBD. Utility services are available on this property. The 2028 land use plan classifies this parcel and surrounding areas neighborhood residential. That's defined as areas being located within the city's corporate limits and include many mature neighborhoods. Public utilities are available. An extensive road and sidewalk network already exists. These areas are intended to provide for residential infill development with a wide range of housing types surrounding the town center area. Low-intensity business uses located in mixed-use buildings or buildings designed and constructed at residential scale. And appearance are also appropriate. Development considerations include the compatibility of infill development with existing building patterns. This property is not located in a regulated floodplain or watershed. I will apologize. This yellow you see here is not R6, it is R8. It's a typo there. The pink is your GHBD. The light, light pink to the north, there's NBD. This is the future land use map plan. The star designates that neighborhood residential area in the dark brown. And here is the aerial. These two homes right here in this blue is your site. All of our advertising requirements have been met. The applicant intends to rezone this lot from R, from R8 Neighborhood Residential District in order to, to R6, in order to subdivide the current parcel into two parcels, allowing each home to have its own individual parcel. The city zoning ordinance allows for 7.26 units per acre, as seen below in this area, yard and height requirement. You see that here? The above stated property equals approximately 13,503 square feet, 0.31 approximate acres, which would allow for no more than two lots to be created based on the minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet. The applicant will also need to meet minimum setback requirements listed so that not, so that non-conforming situation does not occur on either lot. A survey was provided to staff to indicate setbacks would be met, the minimum of eight feet. And the lastly, the R6 district would be an appropriate zoning district in the future land use neighborhood residential area because of the smaller lot sizes and proximity to downtown district. So by eliminating the legal non-conforming use on the existing tract, by creating two legal conforming single-family lots and the parcels proposed use under the future land use plan, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval with the consistency statement to city council on August the 3rd.
Counsel, any questions of staff? So initially, he wanted three lots, 1,002, 4, and 6. Again, due to what made him come back to just the two?
Yes, so he had, this, there had been a recent subdivision out there. I'll try to highlight in blue, this lot, which meets our subdivision requirements. And so what he's wanting to do is put a line, a property line, to allow for each home to have its own individual lot.
Thank you.
Just two, though. Just two lots.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Further questions? This is a public hearing. Anyone else who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, close to public hearing. Second, Councilmember Hall. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
Move ordinance, move that we approve ordinance 2326 to rezone tax record 2638 from R8 to R6.
So a motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramble.
With the consistency statement, Justice.
Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving on now to 3D, ordinance 2327, to rezone tax record 31787 from R8 to R6. Staff, will you introduce?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is zoning map amendment 23-08. The applicant is Lee Allen, property owner here at Stanley County Family YMCA. And it's 9.6 acres off Ash Street, and the tax record is 31787. The existing zoning out there is R8, and the proposed would be R6. It is vacant. It does have a ball field on it. The proposed use would be residential. The applicant's statement, the rezoning of this parcel of land will allow much-needed housing to be built utilizing the land in the most efficient way possible. The adjacent parcel is already R6, and across the street is LID zoning. Like I said, it has a sports field on it now, and it will be used for housing. To the north, you have some R6. To the east, you have Light Industrial District, R8. Neighborhood Residential District, to the south, R8. West, R8 and R6. Water and sewer are available on Ash Street, but may need to be extended towards the subject property. The future land use map classifies these parcels here as general residential areas located within the city's corporate limits, and public utilities are provided. Areas classified as general residential typically consist of lots ranging from 1/4 to 1/2 acre in size and have an established network of roads that are well-connected, but often lack sidewalks. The general residential classification also features areas of low-density development with roads that are not well-connected and frequently terminate in cul-de-sacs. Compact residential neighborhoods that set aside significant natural vistas, parkland, landscape features, and other rural heritage features for permanent conservation are encouraged. Development considerations include environmental impacts, urban sprawl, road connectivity, impact on adjoining neighborhoods, protection of natural features and vistas, and the availability of adequate infrastructure. This property is not located in any regulated floodplain or watershed district. There does not appear to be any other significant. There does not appear to be any other significant environmental impacts on this property. This is the zoning map here. You see the yellow is existing R8. To the north is your R6. The large gray over there is your LID. That's right there near the intersection of Moose and Ash. Here's your future land use plan. The area here with the star. And this is your aerial here. The ball field you see there near that intersection of Ash and Moose. All advertising requirements have been met for this meeting. The applicant intends to rezone this parcel from R8 Neighborhood Residential District to R6 Urban Residential District in order to provide more housing options within the area. Staff believes this rezoning would provide an opportunity to expand the variety of housing types available to all citizens. Furthermore, this property is adjacent to property that is currently zoned R6 Urban Residential District, which is to the north. Lastly, this parcel has direct access to Ash Street, which would provide future residents with quick access to Old Salisbury Road, a collector road, and US 52 North, a principal arterial roadway for daily travels. Given the proposed use, the parcel's proposed use under the future land use plan, adjacent R6 zoning to the north, and availability to infrastructure, there are merits for the proposed rezoning to be consistent with the city's future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval with the consistency statement on August 3.
Questions for staff? This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Good evening, Lee Allen. Thank you so much, council members, Mr. Mayor. YMCA owns that park. We would call it the Ash Street Park. My kids, right, everybody's kids played soccer on it or whatever. We're looking to move that asset from what we would call a non-performing asset over to take that capital that we might get from that and go ahead and use it in the existing facilities that we have already. We looked, actually, before coming to you guys, back to the 2028 plan and saw that we addressed two of the weaknesses, which was just the loss of young professionals leading to age. We addressed several things. One of them was the lack of affordable housing and diversity in housing types. Two of the other things we did where we said we needed walkable communities with connectivity, that actually, I run that route and run Ash Street from the YMCA. And so it also helps us to explore ways to encourage infill development, and it makes appropriate use of high-density zonings. And then finally, some of your goals and objectives off your 2028 plan. This addresses encouraging well-planned residential development. That'll promote the best interest of residents and the community as a whole. Helps protect the integrity of established residential neighborhoods. We do discourage sprawl by having it there inside. And then expand the variety and improve the quality of housing types. And then finally, our property doesn't have any of the steep slopes or anything else that the adjoining stuff that's already been rezoned R6 does. So it allows us to actually protect some of those natural features. We don't have trees on there or anything else. Where we do have trees, we can utilize some of that as green space as required in the event we do something. So welcome into your questions.
Counsel, have any questions? Again, this is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing. Second by Councilmember Aldridge. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Move approve ordinance 2327, rezone tax record 31787 from R8 to R6.
Motion by...
With the consistency statement.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve ordinance 2327 with consistency statement.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Dry. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next, moving to Administrator Ford, Andy Fusco, Chief Assistant Officer for Electric Cities of North Carolina. Counsel, I'll remind you that we have heard in the past there was an opportunity to sell some of our excess capacity and for the public. The city of Alamois is one of 19 cities that owns a large portion of a nuclear plant. And if we are able to sell this excess capacity, which will not hurt us, we will still have plenty of capacity. We will actually be able to lower our electric rates again next year. The exact number, how much we'll be able to lower, we will not know after this sale goes through if all 19 cities approve. Andy?
Thank you, Mayor. And as you just stated, I'll be here to provide you with some background and information on exactly what you just said and hopefully get approval to move forward with this tonight. Am I supposed to bring forward the presentation, or does somebody else do that?
Jay is on his way.
Okay, yeah.
But Andy has done this before.
I can find it. You want me to open it for you? I'll let you drive. Oh, did you have this loaded? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
So Andy, while we're in dead time right now.
Yes.
May we ask a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. And there are 19 of us.
Yes.
That all 19 have to agree, is that correct?
That is correct by the power supply contracts that we have in place. We need each individual council to approve this agreement.
So you're on the road.
I'm on the road, yes. We're all on the road.
That's right.
Yes. I've had report backs from other councils today, including Monroe, and they've been all passing as scheduled.
Andy, while they're doing that, pass on, I'll tell you and all the staff, thank you for the wonderful conference. That's one of the best training conferences I can ever remember because we covered a lot of topics that are very important to this group. So thank you, and tell them we think.
I will tell them, and thank you for stating that. We're happy to have you, as always. Okay, here's my slides. Sorry for the delay. So yes, I'll be covering this proposed transaction. I understand, you know, we've had a representative here before. So I will move quickly, or at least I will try to. However, if I gloss over something or don't explain something to your satisfaction, please stop me. I'll be happy to answer any questions. So my presentation will cover four things. Just some background on our ownership and how we got to where we are today. The key elements of the proposed transaction. I'll provide some economic and risk analytics for you to kind of back up those numbers. And then, of course, I'll end on the request for approval and next steps. So as you know, Agency One owns Catawba Nuclear Station, and City of Alamois is a participant in Agency One. For many, many years, we have, you know, through analysis, determined that we've had more nuclear capacity than we needed to serve our native load. And we've been trying to right-size and diversify our portfolio of generation assets accordingly. Earlier this spring, the Board of Commissioners for Agency One and the Electric Cities Board of Directors approved this transaction, which is a sale of effectively 150 megawatts of nuclear capacity off the Catawba Station to Central Electric Cooperative Incorporated in South Carolina. And we are asking you here tonight to approve the required ordinance and other documents that were sent to you by our attorney, Mike Colo of Pointer Spru. A little bit of background. We have been attempting to sell a part of Catawba for several years. In 2011 through 2012, we worked with an investment banker who did an RFP to try to find an off-taker. The result of that RFP was not good from an economic perspective. We did not have any viable proposals. In 2016 through 2018, we engaged in discussions with Duke Energy Carolinas to sell a portion of this asset to them. And those negotiations stalled due to regulatory concerns. And then finally, last year and into the beginning of this year, we entered into discussions with Duke Energy Carolinas again, as well as Central Electric Cooperative, who both had needs at that point in time. So a little on the Catawba Nuclear Station. There are two nuclear units at the Catawba Nuclear Station. Agency One owns 75% of Unit 2 at Catawba Nuclear Station. The other co-owner of that is Piedmont Municipal Power Agency, which is a joint action agency in South Carolina that serves South Carolina municipalities. Through a reliability exchange, we share capacity for both units with the other three co-owners of both units. This provides us reliability and risk mitigation. The Catawba Nuclear Station right now is scheduled to have its license expire in December of 2043. However, there is a high probability that license will be extended by the Nuclear Regulatory Commission through 2063. As you can see there on the lower right of the page, you can see effectively Agency One's ownership of the entire station through that Catawba Exchange and some common equipment between the two units. A little bit about the counterparty, Central Electric Cooperative. In the cooperative world, there was called a generation and transmission cooperative. This means they serve wholesale power to distribution cooperatives, much like the power agency serves wholesale power to individual municipalities. They have a very strong credit rating. They're a good counterparty. And they serve 4,200 megawatts of peak demand in South Carolina, which if you combine the two power agencies and all of the independent municipalities in North Carolina, they would still be less than at 4,200 megawatts. Central serves approximately 1/3 of the load in South Carolina, whereas the municipals in North Carolina only serve about 10% of the load here. Central, like the power agency, obtains its power supply from several sources, including Santee Cooper, Duke Energy Carolinas, and they have some hydro capacity from the Southeastern Power Administration, much like many of our members do. An overview of the proposed transaction. As I said, Central would purchase effectively 150 megawatts or 18% of Catawba from the power agency. This is not a straight sale. We will not transfer title of that capacity to Central. However, it's more of a contractual arrangement that mimics what a sale would be. Okay? And in essence, it is a sale for all intents and purposes, but on paper, it's not. There are three ways that the power agency will receive compensation from Central for this transaction. First off, Central will pay us a levelized capacity payment for a period of eight years. That essentially is the mortgage. They are paying cash for what they are buying from us, basically that capacity. The second way we will derive benefit from them is they will pay for all of the operating costs throughout the life of the unit. And that will include fuel, O and M, any replacement parts, anything that breaks. They will cover their fair share of all of those costs. And then finally, once the nuclear unit is decommissioned, they will cover their proportionate share of the decommissioning fund. Yes, sir?
Does this mean that after the sale, we will still own 57% of the... That's 75 minus 18.
After the sale, by my calculation, we will own 82%. 100 minus 18%, which we're selling to.
I thought we just owned 75% of the...
Oh, now you're asking me to do math. Yes, we own 75% of...
So then we would own 57%.
You don't subtract 18% from that. You subtract 18 times .75, which I can't do in my head. But it would be something less than...
That's even better.
Yep, yep. So other questions on this page? Okay. So the benefits of the proposed sale. First off, we will transfer 18% of the cost to Central Cooperative. So they will be responsible for that. This right sizes our ownership share with regard to our generation portfolio. And I will have a graphic for you on that. But basically, it's a matter of not only having all of the capacity, it's having the right types of capacity. And I'll again explain more about that in a minute. This locks in margins on our surplus energy. Another way to state that is this is essentially a hedge. This gives us price certainty till the end of the life of the unit. So right now, you could argue that we are in a speculative position by selling into the wholesale market, which is a spot market, and we have no price certainty into what we're selling. It could be high, it could be low. The proceeds of this transaction, part of them will be used to defees some of the debt that we have for Agency One. And then finally, other parts of the proceeds will be at the benefit of the individual participants who can use them for system upgrades, rate reduction, what have you. Other considerations for the sale. So yes, while we are locking in our price for what we're selling to Central, there is the prob... or not probability, possibility, low possibility, that those prices could rise. And, you know, we could have made more money in the long run. But that is uncertain. There is the potential for a nuclear asset like this to rise in value based on environmental regulations because it is a non-carbon emitting asset. There is a possibility of load growth, which would require us to have more baseload capacity. However, as I've stated, and I will show you, that is, again, a remote possibility. And then, of course, because we're transacting with a counterparty, there's always the credit risk of that counterparty. But as you just saw, they have an A-plus rating, which is very strong. So I, in my opinion, I think the graphs explain a lot about the economics, more so than the words. So I will attempt to do that for you here. This is a very busy graph. Those red portions of the bars at the end, at the bottom there, I just want to point out, extend below the white legend. So they go all the way down to zero. You can see those at the bottom. That is a large amount of... And that red portion of the bar represents our ownership share of Catawba today. This is before the transaction in this graph. You can see our other assets stacked on top of that. I won't go into all of them. I will highlight the light blue on the left, which is some contracted peaking capacity. And then the purple on the right, which is peaking capacity we would have to go out and secure in the future. What I will draw your attention to are the two lines that move up left to right diagonally. It starts in the green portion of the bar at around 1,100 megawatts in 2023 and extends into the purple on the right. That solid line there represents our forecasted peak demand. Okay? However, good utility practices, you don't procure assets only up to that line. You need a reserve margin in case you have a year where you have more demand than you forecasted. That reserve margin is represented by that dotted line that starts at about 1,300 megawatts in 2023. So again, good utility practice used across the industry is that we have a 17% reserve margin. In other words, 17% above what we need. So the key takeaway in this graph is today, before the transaction, as you can see in the light blue area, we have more capacity than we would normally plan for from a reserve margin perspective. And that is because back in the 2008, 2009 timeframe, it was before the housing bubble. At that point in time, our load forecasts were showing we needed peaking capacity. So we entered into agreements at that point in time. Lo and behold, a couple of years later, the housing market happened, or crash happened. Everybody's demand dropped. And as we came out of that, the growth rate was much slower. So that is why we have that in place. And the other point there is those contracts roll off in 2030 and 2031, as you can see here in this graph. A lot going on there. Are there any questions on this graph? Okay. The next graph that I will show you is post-sale. So as you can see, those blue lines back, back down to approximately where that reserve margin line. Now, in 2023, we're not... The transaction will not be in place, so that is why that's still above the line. But what this does is it right sizes our generation portfolio so we have under contract or owned the amount of generation that we need based on good utility practice. Okay?
Is the lifetime of that plant 2043?
I'm sorry?
Is the lifetime of that reactor 2043?
The license currently goes to 2043. The license currently goes to 2043, and that's what this shows here. However, there is a possibility it can go to 63. Yes? Okay. Another graphic to show you, and this again is a little bit to digest. I'll point you to the blue line that curves from the upper left down to the lower right. Okay? That's called a load duration curve. There are 8,760 hours in a year. If you were to take the power agency's demand for each one of those hours and order it from highest to lowest, that will create your load duration curve. And this is important when you're doing power supply planning, because it helps you pick the assets you need to meet demand. The green portion under the blue line is the amount that Catawba would serve after this proposed transaction. The red portion there on the left represents the 150 megawatts that we would sell to Central. So the key takeaway here is compare and contrast that red area to the left compared to if you were to extend that all the way to the right. The area of that right-hand side represents the surplus sales, which is energy we don't need and we would have to sell in the market. From a power supply planning perspective, it would, based on that proportion, it would be, we'd be better served to provide capacity through combustion turbine, which is cheaper to build and more cost-effective, basically. So again, a lot going on here. Okay, so we're through the graphics here, and we have a table, and I'm going to highlight just one line of numbers here as a key takeaway, and that is the line that says millions of dollars, millions of $2023, right under the reference case title there. So if you scan to the right, what we have is how the benefits or costs are divided by periods of time. So for that period of time where we have excess capacity from 2024 to 2031, the benefit would be $377 million to the power agency. Now, between 2032 and the end of the current license, we would have to procure more capacity to meet that need, and that would cost us $123 million. When you take those two numbers and you take the difference, the net result is we would have a benefit of $254 million, so still well into the black. And then, in the possibility that that license extension goes until 2063, we would still be positive by $174 million at the power agency level. So very strong economics throughout the life of the plant. We also did a probability analysis, because, you know, we know there are concerns. Would we ever need this capacity in the future? We did a Monte Carlo simulation on a vast number of inputs, fuel costs, load forecast, environmental regulation, and several more, and we assigned probabilities to that based on our industry research. We, the Monte Carlo simulation had 5,000 draws. 98% of those 5,000 draws suggested positive economics for this transaction. Those are represented by the bars in blue. The other 2% are represented by the bars on the right, and that's called tail risk. So as you can see here, even under a probabilistic condition, this is a very positive, it is highly likely that this transaction will be positive in financial nature. Now, with regard to Albemarle's position on this transaction, you can see here, highlighted, Albemarle starts with A, so you're always at the top of the list. Again, breaking it down to those periods of time, for the first eight years, you will receive approximately $22 million in benefit from this transaction. Yes, you will incur a cost of $7 million after that period of time, starting in 2032, but that net benefit over the entire period is still $14.6 million projected for Albemarle. If you're interested in understanding what year one looks like under this scenario, which would be your 2024, 2025 fiscal year, that would be nearly $3.2 million in benefit or reduced cost to you during that year. Yes?
Go back to slide.
Back to slide, yes.
So the cost for us would be direct between 32 and 40. Is that right?
Correct. Yes, that's where you would incur more cost because you have to buy more capacity.
Right.
Yep. Questions?
32 is tomorrow. I mean, we don't think about it, but it is.
Yes, and we're already thinking about 32 and purchasing and how we're going to address that. Yes. I'll proceed. Okay. The other consideration you might have is where your wholesale costs land relative to the competition. And here, the information we have on the competition is Duke. Duke's wholesale costs are represented by that red line on this graph. As you can see, that consistently trends upward over time, and keep in mind, they have to abide by the Clean Energy Law that was put into effect a few years ago, so that is further putting upward pressure on their cost. Before the transaction, your costs are represented by the solid line with the solid blue dots. So as you can see, when those capacity payments roll off for the excess capacity that we don't need, plus you end up paying all of the debt for Agency One, our wholesale costs dropped dramatically in 2032 and beyond. Now, after the transaction, that is represented by the dotted line with the open circles, and you can see that those costs drop immediately. As soon as we enter into the transaction, it crosses over that line, you know, of the cost before the transaction, but still only marginally higher than it would have been beyond 2032, you know, to cover those capacity costs. So again, just kind of demonstrating the magnitude of those savings or costs based on the period of time. And then finally, and this is a real simple one, because this is our schedule, and the red line is where we're at today, so everything to the left, we've done. We are in the process of getting all 19 approvals, as we discussed, and we need to get those approvals completed by the 1st of September, per the condition precedent in the agreement with Central. And after that, the, you know, if all that goes well, then on the 1st of January of next year, this contract would begin.
Like the 1st of September, like two weeks away.
Like two weeks away, yes.
Council, have any questions?
Yep.
You bring your check.
Any questions, Andy?
It's come a long way in less than a year to get to this point, which I think is amazing. When you look at all 19 cities, we're all going to be there, but the South Carolina piece, wasn't it initially had a little bit of glitch to it? I'm trying to remember.
So are you talking in the 2016, 2018 timeframe?
Yes.
Yes, so there are, there were a couple of hangups. First off, at that point in time, if Duke would have procured its share, they would have had, in the terms of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, market power in the region. So that was one glitch. And the second glitch is you notice the other co-owner of Catawba Unit Two was PMPA, another municipal power agency. And South Carolina law states that PMPA can only co-own an asset with another municipality. So if Duke were to own a portion of our share of that, it would have caused a problem.
Yeah. Council, any further questions?
We're not, we're not in public hearing, are we? We're just?
No, we're not in public hearing.
Move, we approve ordinance 2329.
I have a motion to approve ordinance 2329 to adopt the power agency documents. Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. I entertain a motion to approve the excess power purchase agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldrich, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And I also need a motion to approve project power sales agreement.
Amen.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Bramlett, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Andy, thank you. You have any further comments?
I have none. It's always good to deliver good news.
If you have more to bring us, come back.
Are you on your way back to Raleigh? Or are you on your way to another spot tomorrow?
No, I'm on my way back to Raleigh. My job is done.
Thank you.
Pleasure seeing you.
Tell you folks what a great meeting that was.
Move on to 7B, the Police Department report and review. Chief, Andy, Michael, you have any comments?
No, I don't have any comments.
I'm just, I'm throwing this out there. Do we want to hold this till the next meeting since we have two members of council that are not with us tonight? I'm just putting that out there.
I don't hear anything. Move forward, chief.
All right. So it's my honor to be before you. Thank you for having me, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. On behalf of the men and women of the Albemarle Police Department and the annual report for 2022, I'm going to go over a few items here.
Could you go into the mic, please, sir? Thank you.
So again, the Police Department's commitment, we're committed to fairness, compassion, and excellence while providing police services in accordance with the law and sensitivity to the priorities and needs of the community. Some of the highlights we've experienced during 2022. Assistant Chief Honeycutt retired after more than 30 years of service. I think he actually had 33 years when he finally made the decision to retire. And Sergeant Stargains retired with 30 years of service. Other highlights, the men and women that we hired through 2022 that attended the academy, several of those have successfully completed their field training and are out on independent patrol currently. Then our laterals that we welcomed in 2022. We had officers that came with us with over seven, and Officer, or actually, at the time, Officer Wilson had over 10 years of experience in other law enforcement agencies. During Hometown Hero Recognition in 2022, we were honored to have three of our officers recognized for their outstanding work. Some of the community engagements that we assisted with, Butterflies in the Park, and that was the Child Abuse Prevention Center, Operation Medicine Drop that we report every month in our monthly reports, Food Truck Fridays, the Police Department's engaged in a lot of those opportunities with the community, and we continue that every Food Truck Friday. The Autumn Extravaganza and Christmas Parade, we have different events set up during those events, and we look at those opportunities to connect with the community. We have Back to School Bash with the E. Waddell Center. We had supplied some food and met with the children and parents connecting there as well. We also conducted a bike rodeo at the Waddell Center last year, and we had several children that had bikes out there. We engaged with them, did some bike safety, and we're on site to just be part of that with Parks and Recreation. Throughout the year, we visited several, all four of the schools numerous times. They, some of the children came to the police headquarters for visits. We had different events with parents and with the children. Other highlights with our engagements, Coffee with a Cop program continued through 2022. We had our first annual Faith in Blue weekend. With that, it brings in faith to be the catalyst to gain support, connecting community with the Police Department. We had Community Night Out, which was the kickoff for our first Faith in Blue event last year. We had Holiday Heroes as well. We participated in that for the last several years, and that was a huge event for us. Again, we took six children to breakfast, then took them up to Walmart with members of the Fire Department to provide some gifts for those children that may not have had such a, a well-established Christmas with gifts. The APD community training, some of the opportunities we sought out and participated with, we provided several active shooter response trainings to not only the community college, but other businesses that sought us out to come in and give them some ideas on if they were to have an active shooter or active threat encounter, how they could coordinate and what they would expect with the Police Department, how we would respond, as well as other public safety entities. We provided crime prevention and checks with fraud with businesses, some of the elderly that have been sought out for some fraud, and other areas in the public who have encountered some issues. We presented with kids and bike helmets, making sure that they were properly fitted, and the kids knew the importance and safety factors of riding bikes or operating on scooters or any other vehicles, and the safety impact with wearing a helmet that's properly fitted. The car seat installation program, we've continued that as well. We are helping, or actually, meeting with the Fire Department to assist the public in installing their car seats so they're properly installed and fit for their child. We amped up training in 2022, trying to ensure that we stayed on the cutting edge with our de-escalation practices through in-service legal updates, having public interaction forums, experiencing the new hazmat training as well. We pushed hard for some advanced supervisor training. A lot of that was outside the state to ensure that some of our supervisors had the ability to leave the North Carolina area and to connect with national practices, specifically with training related to supervisory management and leadership principles. What they do when they go outbound, they bring those resources back and different peer supports that they have for a lifetime while here with the Albemarle Police Department. Over the next 20 years, they have resources they built in with those trainings that they come back with. Our Internal Affairs Program, it being responsible for ourselves and making sure that there's transparency with the community and that we stick to what we spoke with, commitment to the community and with, without bias, and doing what's best in policing, the best practices. So our Internal Affairs Division, though it's headed by one captain, there's a lot of moving parts in that area. So he's received several outbound training from national conferences, and he brings those resources back to us to make sure that we are staying current. Criminal investigations, they've received several top-notch trainings. One of the more specific ones involves crimes against children. Over the last two years, and it started in 2022, we've had a lot of advancements that we're going to see payoffs and dividends here in the future. So the crime report, you know, what I want to acknowledge, and this is a quote, "The proactive efforts of our officers, detectives, supervisors, and the civilian staff resulted in record-low year in total crime in comparison of the previous five years." And to me, when you look at this slide, for the five-year average crime, and that's property and violent crime, the average is 789.8. And for the five-year period in 2022, we had 714. So that's, that's much more of a reduction than we've seen over the last five years. So what that means is 2022 was safer over the last five years. 2021, you can see, we had a significant drop, and 2023, we're trending the same direction. Calls for service did drop over 2022, not that drastic, is only a 4% reduction. These are some of the juvenile programs that we've been committed with. We did have 130 students in the DARE program. We did not have a junior academy last year. We had some personnel realignments that came in conflict with that program. We did pick that up this year in 2023. Other programs that we engaged with, we had 15 of those that could have been some of the events we did with schools, and we had the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts come in onboard with the Police Department for different events.
So that's not programs, that's particular students? That's just 15 students, is that right?
These are the Patrol Division activities focusing on traffic issues and injuries and crashes with traffic, and coupled with fatalities. What's important there is we've only had one fatality in 2022, and that was an individual, a pedestrian that was struck by a motor vehicle, and I believe that was after, or sometime after midnight. So it was late at night in a dark area. Made 56 DWI arrests, 28 reckless driving, speeding violations, 194 seatbelt violations are huge as well, because we're trying to push with the Governor's Project on safety and making sure that people are wearing their seat belts and have their children restrained. We had 30 of those.
So hang tight, you got two different numbers for DWI, one arrest and one DWIs. What's the difference there? What's the difference there?
I'm not able to answer that right now. The arrests should be reflective that DWI may be related to crashes and DWI arrests may be individual off arrests only. I would have to go back and check those.
They ought to match. It looks like they should probably match. I'm just looking at numbers.
Okay. Our staffing philosophy is, I wind down, and you've got the annual report that's got more data in that package. It's also online for the public to view. But some of the principles that guide the police department through 22 and into 2023 in the future, command responsibilities as they're delegated down the chain. What that means is we've kind of switched gears with our former strategies and the way the department was aligned. Our structure has changed a little bit. We've realigned our captain positions, created lieutenant positions that you all can probably recall early in 2022 where we developed that. It's all for accountability, communication, and effective oversight and at a command level within the organization, specifically at the patrol level. What that's going to do also is provide opportunity for future growth, command-level leadership, management, and accountability. It also gives us some succession planning. We've got a lot of young officers in. We're growing and developing our future leaders, our future supervisors. So as we prepare at the command level, they're able to further prepare our future supervisors. One thing that I gleaned off the Electric Cities presentation, he mentioned 17% reserves. I'll throw out there, over the next five years, I'd love to have that number within our agency. A 17% reserve would elevate us to about a five, five or six officer elevation. So looking at our current staffing at 52, as we get full, hopefully in the next 18 months, we've got four in the academy currently. That would provide us an opportunity to handle some of the expansion and growth that the city has seen.
How, excuse me, how many more personnel do we need to be at full staffing?
Currently, we have nine vacancies.
Nine.
So, yeah, Chief, on the organizational chart here, I know in our monthly reports, you announced that we have, I guess, one lieutenant now, is that correct?
Correct.
So on the, on the organizational chart, where does that, where does lieutenant fit in here?
We have two lieutenant positions, one staffed as a patrol, the patrol division.
Okay.
The other vacancy is still there, we just have not promoted to that position yet.
Okay.
Further questions?
And this was for calendar year '22.
2022, yes, ma'am.
So one thing I didn't see, we were just handed this tonight, and I'll look through it again, one thing I didn't see, and I don't know if this was an issue, I can't remember because this is August of '23, if during '22 we had as much traffic issues or as many traffic concerns in neighborhoods. And since in this calendar year, when we have had folks come before us talking about, and I'm just going to throw it out there, the Anderson Road area, Anderson Heights area, I mean, I kept hearing the police department's having their annual report later in August or whenever, and you should know something then. I couldn't tell anything here, and I still haven't heard anything, and it may not be in here, but I still am waiting for us to come up with something because I've got folks, I mean, and I don't like social media, but social media's got it on there all the time about we're still having issues of speeding through our neighborhoods and those kinds of things. So where are we there? And did any of that occur in '22 or in my, has all that been occurring? I can't remember if that's been an issue just in '23 because I know this is an annual report for '22.
Right, no, that's nothing new. I think we've experienced more traffic-related speeding complaints, parking issues, and a few others over 2023 than we did in 2022. But the report did, we've got a log of about 14 areas of traffic concerns that we are following up on. We've got sergeants assigned to those areas specifically, and they're tracking all activities made by the officers in those areas.
So when might we, when might we know what's going on there or what we're, what we are doing or what you all are doing? Because people are asking me all the time. Y'all, I mean, we don't see anything changing is what folks are saying to me.
Right. Police officers are out there. Unfortunately, there's probably more speeders exponentially than there are police officers. We are out there, we're vigilant. We've also got other duties as well. But I encourage the folks out there to, to please call directly to the police department if you have any specific concerns because you have direct information. Maybe you know who is doing it, if it's somebody in the neighborhood or if you don't recognize the vehicles, and we can at least know a date, a specific day or time of day that we could be out there and set up. But the more information we have, the better we can respond.
That's the kind of information I think our PEO needs to get on social media then if they, if folks just to call and put that number out.
Okay.
Chief, one thing that's been brought to my attention primarily is the folks at the north end of 52 at the intersection of 2427, out handing out pamphlets, getting into the street, going to cars, don't know what they're doing, and nobody seems to really know that part. But we don't, we're not supposed to have that type of activity, is that correct?
It's against the law for anybody to pander in the streets, interfere with traffic, and likewise, it's a violation for a driver to stop or delay traffic to engage with somebody in the median.
For those guys, I got in trouble the other day. I went by the department to tell them about these folks because they're out there constantly.
Right.
And they'll, they'll go from there over to East Almaral and do the same thing. I'd like for us to get a little bit more of a handle on that. One of these kids, one of these folks is going to get run over or hit from somebody who doesn't really care about what they're doing. But I, I'd love to see that cleaned up a little bit more than what it is.
Absolutely.
Piggyback on that, I did see one Leonard Avenue going into Walmart the other day, and I actually, it's been a couple of weeks, I actually took a picture of him. He was in the street going car to car.
All right.
So I think next time I'll make a picture and send it.
Yeah, I will share it with you. We've, we've dealt with several of the same repeat offenders, and unfortunately, when they, if they get taken to the magistrate's office or released on a summons, they continue. We do do our part. You know, our officers, I know of a few of the local flyers out there that, you know, we've encountered numerous times.
Thank you. Further questions, comment?
I'll just, to the comment about the speed, it looks like we had, based on this report in 2022, we had 194 citations, that's basically 16 a month. With the heightened complaints as far as speeders are concerned, what are you, what are you doing specifically to target and try to cite more citations to those speeders?
Well, we're locating those areas of complaints. We did have the speed trailer. Unfortunately, that went down, and we're still waiting for some repairs. And we did get a line item in our budget to purchase a new speed trailer. But identifying the patterns, the data, again, the date, the time to deploy our resources, we've got to look at all that, and we can respond better with more data. So we've kind of been crippled without having that speed trailer. But we are tracking each location. Again, the more information we can get about the time of day, any specific days, we can deploy resources more, more efficiently.
And those are the 14 areas that you mentioned.
That's correct.
Correct.
Thank you for no murders this year.
I'm sorry.
Thank you for no murders this year.
Yeah, I appreciate that as well.
And sometime, not tonight, I'd like to talk with you about the difference between larceny and burglary. Don't do it now, don't do it.
Okay.
Further questions, comments? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
We're going to 7C, departmental monthly reports are in your agenda. Questions, comments?
I have a couple, of course I do, but that's just the way I am. Downtown development, I see in the report that we've got some requests or proposals for the police department. I just would like for us to know what's going on there, and I sent several of you a message that one Sunday night, not this, not yesterday, but last Sunday night, I came by, the old police department lights were on in there, and was wondering what's going on there. So where are we there?
If you checked your email this afternoon, you have the RFP, and Lindsay and David are starting an advertising campaign this week to try to get that out as much as possible.
And I have not seen that because I was not aware I could check that this afternoon, Ronnie. So.
Yes, so it was posted on the city's website, my department's website, last Friday.
Like, this, this past Friday?
This past Friday, yes, ma'am. And currently working on getting it posted on Preservation North Carolina's website. They're going to post it on their social, so I'm coordinating with David on that, sending it out to all the parties who had previously asked for it to be sent to them, and we're going to, you know, blast it as far as we can.
Thank you. I just, I just knew last Sunday, not yesterday, but last Sunday, lights were on in there and it was dark, and I'm thinking, I wonder what's going on.
Some are on permanently for safety, but I did show, unfortunately had a family emergency and was out last Friday, and it was shown to two different developers. When I went back on Monday, ensured everything was off. I, I do know some remain on, but not probably as many.
Okay, very good.
I'd like to suggest you maybe send it out as a news release to the newspaper, the radio.
Right, absolutely.
Just to clarify, Lindsay, the schedule for reissuing the RFP, the communications and the path forward from here, we're still on the schedule that was, was committed to.
Absolutely. It will close by the end of September, and I've provided them all my contact information for questions and everything like that.
I guess my question was, is that I just had seen, was seeing activity, and I had not seen those particular lights on, on, okay? And that was the big problem.
Absolutely, I understand. Thank you for letting me know.
Yep, thank you.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything further? Moving on to the consent agenda, 8A, Adoption of Public Housing Inventory Policy, and 8B, Ordinance 2328, Budget Amendment to Purchase Solid Waste Collection Equipment.
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble to approve, approve the consent agenda. Second by Councilmember Whitley, further discussion?
Just a question about that inventory. Why now? Is that not something we've always had? I mean, is.
It is, but not specifically, you know, we're a part of another agency, so we've got to balance city requirements versus what they're looking for. So this just blends the two and provides satisfaction to HUD that it has what they're seeking in the policy as well.
So this is something that they want.
Right, just with the specific detail that they'd like to see in the policy.
So we have, okay, that's, that's my, you know, the timing of it was what I was really asking about. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. As opposed, motion carries. Moving on to number nine, 9A, Consider Appointments to the Boards and Commissions. Unless council has a applicant tonight, we'll continue that to the next meeting. Now, encourage you to help us find some applications for these final two appointments of Planning and Zoning Board.
I've talked to some people, and they're having the same problem we're having, getting people interested.
Hard to get volunteers.
We need to go out and solicit.
Mr. Ferris, to your knowledge, are those the only two current openings that we have?
I believe so. It's been going, the appointment process has been going on for a few months now, and I think those are the last two that we have pending, which is the second, third alternate on the plan board. Everything else, all the other boards that are appointed this time of year are full. Is that, and I see Miss Stone on your head.
That's, I thought that those were the last two, but by the next meeting, let's just make sure that those are the only two that we're still looking for if we can't. I mean, I'd just like to do one last.
All right, going around the table, Mr. Aldridge.
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Bramble.
My wife said to thank you for fixing that fence down here, the entrance down here.
Mr. Dry.
No, sir.
Mr. Whitley.
Look.
Ms. Hall.
I think that we, County Cog Meeting is next, next week, and actually, I know that Cindy has done her due diligence into getting us to tell her who might be going to Oprah on next Tuesday, but Cindy may have already gotten it from everybody, I don't know, but somebody reached out to me today to ask if we were bringing people, so please let Cindy know that. That's what I thought. Thanks. And just to follow up, we did have three council members and the mayor and several staff members to go to Electric Cities last week. I was thrilled beyond measure that we had such a good outpour or attendance of our staff folks that were there. And I had mentioned to Jay, and if it's, if anybody that went wants to sort of meet with him and give him our ideas of things or any of that information, I just believe if we go to conferences and it's just for our own information, that's one thing, that if we can meet to share stuff, I think that's just a, a better, in my opinion, a better way to do things. So I would just throw that out there. And I did receive from the Charlotte Stormwater Organization an invitation of a meeting that's taking place, a stormwater meeting on Wednesday of this week, and I forwarded that information to both Mr. Ferris and to Ross. And though we may agree, since we don't have a stormwater plan, we're not going to send anybody to it, but I would just continue to urge that we need to gather and we need to gather as much information as this council needs to move forward with one because soon and very soon, as we see from the departmental reports, the money out there that are doing some studies now are soon going to be here. So I would just say to you, guys, it's out there. We, we don't need to, we need to continue to talk about it because it's going to continue to be right in front of us. And that meeting is on Wednesday in Charlotte. A last, it's an attaboy I received, and I will get this letter to, to Mr. Ferris, who then can get it to Ross. I received a call about two weeks ago from someone that lives on Walnut Street who said she had the best experience in a bad situation down at the landfill. And I'm going to paraphrase this letter, but basically she was helping someone to clean out some things and took a bunch of stuff to the landfill to get rid of and realized a couple hours after she had taken it that one of the things that was thrown away was a very important piece of, a very important plaque. So she went down and the next morning before they opened or was there when they were opening it before 7:00, and she named some particular individuals who just came to her aid. She said, Martha, I've never seen anybody go into the trash, but they went in and found this particular trophy that she had, that had been thrown away by mistake. So I've got some folks, Ross, whose name she wanted to call out, so I want you to be able to give them that attaboy.
Actually, yeah, if you'd get that to me, I'll get to Ross and then.
I'll give it to you right now.
Okay, and we'll let the, the individuals know and thank them for a job well done, and not only that, but going above and beyond. And also what we can do is put all our parts of this, you've probably seen that we've done this in the past where we've received calls or emails or notes from the public when we do get thanks for, you know, not only a job well done, but courteous service or going above and beyond, we try to put those in the employee newsletter as well. In fact, even our Director of Communications has posted some of those online as well just to, you know, say thank you for allowing us to serve you and, and, you know, thanks to our employees as well. So I appreciate you sharing this information because there's a lot of positive things we can do with it, and it's something that's well deserved on behalf of the employees.
Any further?
No.
Mr. Ferris, you have anything?
No, we don't, thank you.
I'll entertain a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to the North Carolina General Statutes 143, 31811, 3, 4, and 6, Consult with Attorney, Economic Development, and Personnel.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. We go back into regular session.
Don't move.
Motion by Councilmember Bramble.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, motion carries. Council met in closed session to consult with the city attorney, personnel, and economic development. We have nothing to disclose. I'll entertain a motion that we recess until August the 28th at 6:30 PM.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed.